We'll call the November 29th meeting of the Planning Commission order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sidoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertaining motion for the approval of the minutes of the November 8th meeting. So moved.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Cicero.
I abstain.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
I abstain.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Before we begin the public hearings, we're going to ask our new Assistant Law Director to be sworn in, so Mr. Zeeman, if you'd take care of that, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Paul Eugene Miller.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the municipality of Mentor.
Of the municipality of Mentor.
And will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Assistant Law Director.
Of Assistant Law Director.
Paul, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
We have three public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings, we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against are given an opportunity to speak against, or if they just have questions, then we'll answer the questions. So with that in mind, the first public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit to allow leasing and vehicle servicing at 8585 Mentor Avenue. The applicant is here, so if you come forward to the podium and identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Are you sure? Okay.
You seemed a little soft-spoken there.
I don't think the micro-- is the microphone working? Just tap it, see if it's working.
Okay. Give us a little idea of what you'd like to do at that location.
I'm here representing Enterprise Rent a Car. The goal here is to develop the site as such as it was previously used as a used car sales facility. Existing building is in rather rough condition, so Enterprise is looking to improve or use here to tear down that existing building, to rebuild the site. We'll have a building in the front, which will be primarily leasing, building itself. That will have employees that lease it. They'll have a return lanes there, pickup lanes for customers. Then we're proposing a second building in the back, and second building is used for washing and prepping the cars for leasing purposes. Right now, we're showing development of lot, pretty much to the extent that it's currently paved, but long-term, they envision that this will continue to grow, and there's a large section of undeveloped property to the back that they eventually think will become used for additional storage of vehicles.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against? Would you come forward and identify yourself for the clerk, please?
My name is Mike Fraser. I live at 7362 Maple Street. So basically, on that drawing right there, I'm the middle house going off, and first of all, I'm not opposed to Enterprise. I really like to see them come in there.
Okay.
But there's two minor issues that I saw when I looked at the plot. One is, in the middle of my property, there's a very large black locust tree, and I'd like to make sure it stays there.
Okay.
It's right on the property line. And the second thing is, I looked on the drawing that was submitted, which is that one, and Note 7 says that they're going to have an eight-foot-high cedar fence board-on-board. That's somewhat ambiguous. Sometimes you can put those up where there's an air gap between the boards and a lot of visual see-through, so I'd like the boards to be solid, close together.
Gotcha. Okay.
There's no gap in them.
Okay. We'll address that.
That's-- those two issues, that's it.
That was relatively minor.
Yes. I mean, other than that, I know Enterprise. I've used them for years when I rented cars. They're a good company. I'd like to see them in there.
Okay.
So.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak against or have questions? Okay, we'll close the public portion, invite you back to the podium. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? I do have a question. What happens to the current location?
They'll close that location down and move those operations here.
I have a question, Mr. Zeeman. In the code, does it say something about new car sales in order to-- you're going to sell used cars there?
No, they don't sell any cars here. It's just for rental purposes, leasing.
Okay. Don't you have to have new vehicle sales in order to do something along these lines?
Correct. The site previously was the site of, actually, it was an RV dealership, and ancillary to that, there had been some used passenger vehicles that had been sold for years. It ceased operations, although I think there's some vehicles parked out there. So we were interested administratively whether or not moving forward, there was going to be any proposal that vehicle sales may continue, either by Enterprise or by another entity at that location. So if we can get a definitive answer to that, that certainly answers that serious question that we have.
So no sales at all?
No vehicle sales, no.
So that could be a condition?
That can be a condition.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
When you did your preliminary design, site plan and such, which the conditional use permit documents are based on, were you aware of the design constraints that apply to that property, the village design standards?
Design standards?
Right.
I didn't realize we have specific standards for that particular area, no.
So could I then suggest that the design might be non-responsive to the requirements for development?
I'm going to ask Ms. Mitchell to explain what you think the design guideline-- not what you think they are, but what they actually are, the design guidelines for that area.
Ms. Chairman, do you want to speak to this regarding-- during the site plan review, or?
I think it's all part and parcel, so I think we need to discuss it now.
And just to clarify my concern, I'm not just looking at the architectural part of it, I'm looking at the general site plan development that the conditional use permit is being based on, as being non-responsive to the general design guidelines in total, not just the architectural or not. It has to do with setbacks, has to do with massing, has to do with addressing the Mentor Avenue pedestrian corridors, all that kind of stuff. So it's not just the one thing, and I wouldn't want to go ahead with the conditional use permit only to find out that we're going down a dead-end road. So I think we need to get a response about that now, before we vote even on the conditional use permit.
Okay, well, from a building setback standpoint, it does meet general guidelines. Of course, this is per development plan, so those can be modified as you see fit. The design guidelines are with respect to specifically, which are outlined in the-- on page six of the design guidelines, it talks about, there are a set of guidelines for the village core, and those are within the commercial district along Mentor Avenue, which is about a four-block area between Center Street and Jackson Street. So there's a specific set of criteria, trying to be compatible with the design that has been established over time, and we do have, you know, some examples of some buildings that currently exist, or even some recent buildings that were approved in recent years that would be consistent with those guidelines, if you wanted to look at that in terms of style.
If I can interject there, I think behind what's now the Mitsubishi dealership, which was originally billed as a Honda dealership, is one example of that. I think where Brunner's Healthcare, which is now a Remax operation, that was done with that in mind, and I think the hotel.
There's the Brunner.
I think the hotel is also done with that in mind, so I think there's some certain criteria that needs to adhere to, and I think that's what Mr. Varga is addressing. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, and I don't know how much detail you want me to go into with regard to the specific guidelines. That is an example, the Brunner of the two-story, two-to-three-story desired style of architecture, and again, looking at compatibility with what is in the core, in the village core.
And it's my understanding, just from a historical point of view, there are a lot of examples that are not conforming to the standards.
Sure.
Because they predate the standards.
Right.
So I can see in many people's minds, they're saying, "Well, look, look at this over here, they don't meet that requirement," or-- but here's a situation, we're talking about a new building, new site development, new relationship to the site and to the street, and it requires a different approach than-- well, I mean, I don't want to get in-- I don't so much want to argue about the actual details. You can look at the standards and figure them out, but for instance, the placement of the building relative to the buildings on either side, the not having parking in front of the facility, stuff like that. And so I'm just seeing that, in general, this proposal is not responsive of those design guidelines at all. So when we think about conditional use, I would feel strongly that-- I don't know how-- I'm speaking for myself right now, I don't know how I could approve the conditional use permit without seeing a project that would-- could meet the standards that are required for that location. So that's all.
Any thoughts?
Well, I will say that what we presented is essentially the image that Enterprise tries to use uniformly throughout northern Ohio. So the materials and the basic design of the building, oftentimes, they go into existing facilities and they just kind of adapt existing facilities. Where they're doing newer facilities and where they can do more wholesale renovations, that's sort of the character they're looking for. That looks a little bit different than what we-- well, the ethos looks a little bit different.
Looks like a bank building.
Yeah, and we do have that large return area, that canopy that goes over to, which would be going to the west, but over to the left on that particular photo. So that canopy is there to protect customers when they return their cars. That canopy extends out to the back so that customers can pick up cars undercover. Those are things that probably are really inconsistent with what you would consider your original, you know, historic core design guidelines. And I'm not sure how we can get away from that specifically. I mean, we can change materials, it's still just a one-story building, we can put a pitch roof on it to add that sort of a character. I don't think they're going to be really excited about taking the parking from the front because essentially, the way the lot's designed is we've got a public area where we have the customers coming, and then we have a private area towards the back where we store the vehicles that are being used for rental purposes. This type of facility will run 300 vehicles out of it, meaning that there'll be roughly 50 on-site, and the rest of them are out in leasing, so there's a lot of traffic that comes in and out. They want to keep that separation of public area from the private area. They don't want those to cross over between the two. I did think we met all the setback requirements from what the code says, maybe not specifically what was desired for the core. Certainly is a tremendous enhancement over what's there now, and I think where we put these buildings up, or at least this design up in the past, I don't think we're-- I think they're relatively attractive buildings.
So can you change the design?
We can make some modifications, sure. I'm not sure exactly what those are going to be to be exactly what you're looking for. I mean, if a pitch roof is what we need, we can put a pitch roof on it.
Well, I don't want to get here and design the building tonight.
I understand that, but I'm-- it's not much I can do about that canopy that sticks out the side. That's going to be like that, and that's not going to be real consistent with a lot of what's going on.
Mr. Varga, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, we could get into the architectural, but that's not really the point right now. I'm speaking in somewhat general planning terms, site planning terms, and, you know, site development terms, and some of these issues with the building too, and I just see that, right off the bat, they're not consistent with the guidelines. Now, if we-- I mean, what happens if you can't make those adjustments? You know, if you can't adjust to those guidelines, I wouldn't want to give you the conditional approval, conditional use approval, only to find out that it can't be done. I mean, it's like, it's almost like we'd need to address some of these issues in general now, that the design guidelines can be met, and then they're not met by this presentation, so I don't want to monopolize the conversation, maybe some other-- Commissioner said something.
Mr. Sidoti?
I agree with Mr. Varga. You testified earlier that you were unfamiliar with these design guidelines for this village core historic district, correct?
Correct.
So when you designed your building, you obviously did not relate or accommodate any of those design guidelines into your design. I would think, instead of going any further tonight, I honestly believe you should go back, and your team needs to familiarize yourselves with those design guidelines, and then get together with our planning staff, our administrative planning staff, and come up with a design that is more accommodating, or that more articulates what these design guidelines are looking for, then come back and make your presentation. I think we would just be wasting a lot of time if we went forward.
Is that a motion, Mr. Sidoti?
I'll present a motion to table this item until a presentation can be made that's more in conformance with the village district historic design guidelines.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We're moved in second to table this item. Jess, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. I would assume that we're also going to table number nine.
I would assume so, too.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for that.
All right, thank you.
Motion to table item number nine, which is the complement piece to item number one.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. I would assume that we're also going to table number nine.
I would assume so, too.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for that.
All right, thank you.
Motion to table item number nine, which is the complement piece to item number one.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. I would assume that we're also going to table number nine.
I would assume so, too.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for that.
All right, thank you.
Motion to table item number nine, which is the complement piece to item number one.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. I would assume that we're also going to table number nine.
I would assume so, too.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for that.
All right, thank you.
Motion to table item number nine, which is the complement piece to item number one.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Second, yes.
While the applicant's still here, I think there was a suggestion that back acres may be needed in the future for additional storage for this business, and I think maybe the administration, you know, if we can get a better understanding as to what the future needs are, if those future needs are an integral aspect of Enterprise's operation at this location, we'd kind of like to-- that may be something that informs the decision today as to whether or not the conditional use should move forward. Granted, they would have to come back and get it modified, but very often, as the commission's aware, sometimes you're presented with an argument that, you know, unless we're allowed to have our CUP amended, it's highly detrimental to our business operations. So again, if there's some future aspect to Enterprise's operation here, which is integral to its continued existence, then that should inform the decision today, so that's why I'd like to suggest that they get us a little bit better feedback relative to what those storage needs might be in the future.
You can do that, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, if they ask me to come back yet, I'm not so sure they're going to have to come back. We'll take a look at it from there.
We'll go from there. So if you don't come back, then the operation continues on 6:15?
Um, until I find another site.
Okay. Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Conditioner use permit to allow a bar, cocktail, lounge, or nightclub at 9528 Diamond Center. I see that applicant's here, so if you come forward and identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Hi, I'm Brian Selinger.
And I'm John Mc.
And tell us what you want to do at that location, please.
So, good evening, first of all, and we purchased the building about two and a half years ago, and we moved our retail operations, which we do a mixed-use business. So we have a brewing license and also a wine-making license, and so we produce wine with our customers there, we produce wine for sale there, we do small brewing operations, and we do educational things all around beer and wine-making. We also, the main part of our business is a retail business. So when we moved in, it made sense to have a small tasting area set up to kind of sample the wares, if you will, and that has worked out well. Going forward, you know, as a business, we're trying to conform to what, you know, challenges are being thrown our way. So we're fighting some Amazon effect, if you will, more people shopping on their phones and things like that. So we lose a little bit to retail sales each year. So we lose, we lose each year a little bit on our retail sales, but our growing sales are finished product sales. So our wine-by-the-bottle, our wine-making with our customers there, and then also our finished product sales in the form of beer by the glass or by the growler. So where our struggle has come is in trying to keep those businesses, you know, within the business, a retail business, keeping those separate, and it's difficult to man a retail store during evening hours, and then also have, you know, people that want to come in and sample product during the day when we're open for our retail hours. So what makes sense for us is to figure out a way to separate it, and looking at the way that the building is laid out, we felt that if we were able to have an addition back, we would easily be able to move our retail into that back section. It basically is the same square footage. If you look, the addition overall, and the numbers that came back out of the statement of the city, I think they're a little bit off. I think we figured about 980 feet, and I think the numbers on the paper came back at 908 feet. I'm not sure if that was a typo or not, but calculated square footage, I think we came out with 980 square feet addition. But that would allow us to move our current retail into the new addition space, and then that would open up the front to be a larger taproom, tasting area, and then also a banquet and event area where we could do additional, you know, rental of that space for parties or showers or things like that during our non-business hours. So the way we laid it out, we feel that we have approximately plus or minus about 70 seating capacity total. The square footage calculated, again, based on, again, a little bit further into this, they were talking about the parking requirements for that. I'm not sure if that's all considered the entire building footprint, but if you calculate out the actual area that would be the new tasting area, it would be about 500 square foot less than what they figured for our parking requirement. So something that maybe we'll go through a little further. But anyhow, we have a growing customer base that wants to come in and try and taste different beers, we have a growing wine-making customer, and a lot of people that are interested in going forward with this. This is all the only things that we would produce there, so only beer and wine that we produce there. We're already licensed with the state to produce those, so we would only be producing our products there. As far as the building goes, we thought it would be really nice to be able to put an exterior patio on.
Let me stop you there for a second.
Sure.
And we'll fill in with some elevator music on the TV.
Multiple mic with a phone dial you're here tonight. Better.
Thank you.
And, you know, what we're finding with that new location is that there's a significant amount of visibility and drive-by traffic, and we thought it'd be really nice to be able to enjoy that on a patio on the front. So that's where the proposed patio part of that came in. That is what we're requesting for change in that, and then there's also a conditional use permit change that we're requesting. I'm not sure if that's part of this first part, or if this is all tied together.
Eventually, it'll all be tied together, but we're dealing with two separate items now.
Okay.
So. We'll close the public portion, no. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak against? Would you come forward and identify yourself for the clerk, please?
I live in Mentor, and I'm one of the customers that frequent Brew Mentor. When they moved, it was a good move from their location there in a smaller store, and it's-- the only reason I wanted to say something is that they provide a unique service, which is not part of necessarily this permit, which they're already doing this, as far as buying supplies, be able to brew beer, make wine, also a lot of the paraphernalia you need, cags, different hoses, things that you could buy online, but it's like, yeah, Amazon is quick, but no one you talk to on the phone really knows how these things all come together and how it's done. And what's unique about this location is that if they weren't there, my options are either go online or drive over to the west side to the Cleveland Brew House, which is part of Platform Brewery, and they sell the same things, okay? Now, this additional space is going to allow people to come in and interact, the people that are brewing beer, because they don't sell any other beer that are what they produce. And people get there, and they also have an opportunity to talk to one another, share ideas in how they're brewing beer or making wine, and this expansion will allow them to have more revenue, and what that does is assure that they might not go away, all right? Everybody's in business, not just to help the public, but to also make a profit and stay in business. So it's important to me that I support them so that I'm able to get the items I need for my home brewing, and that's it.
So you're in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I guess that's.
I need your address, though.
7486 Spring Blossom Drive in Mentor.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Ms. Mitchell, anything you'd like to add?
Just with regard to the comment on the parking calcs and the square footage, the change or the different square footage total for the retail is very minimal. It's not going to have an impact on the parking space requirements, and I guess I just would,
to have a barricade, people are still used to driving, so they drive right over the barricade. I mean, if you've gone over there and take a look at it, there's pretty major traffic patterns right over the curbs that are existing, which may need some, some form of a ballot or something to stop that from happening. I think it's people just probably getting used to the new traffic flows. Maybe it's not called out properly, and, you know, people just say, this is the way I always went, so they just drive right across. I, I don't know, if you've been over there recently?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see where people are just driving right across the first part of that where it was supposed to be. There's a, like a pedestrian path cut through, but, but people are using it as a drive-through. So, but again, to make a conclusive end argument right now, based on the fact that we just are wrapping up construction, there's not proper, there's not proper lane markings yet, nothing is finished, there was construction in the plaza, it's kind of difficult to say, you know, what the total impact is right now.
Sure, that's fair.
We're still getting, you know, we still get a significant amount of the traffic exiting Steak 'n Shake that's coming to that traffic light, that ends up stopping in front of our front door and then turning around, usually not very slowly, radically backing into a parking space and then going back out when they can't make a right-hand turn there because that's, and that's another thing that might be a consideration, is where our driveway exits to that side road, maybe we should have a do not block intersection sign or something there, because people pull all the way up and block that intersection. So now any traffic that's coming across our parking lot can't exit, and so they just stack up in a line there at the light and wait. And so now we have a line of traffic in front of our front door, and then the entire line waiting for the traffic light to turn, which makes it, you know, so I don't know if that's something that could be addressed with.
On that note, are you working to extinguish that cross easement?
We would like to.
So you can put up a barrier there?
We would like to. We've had, we've had discussions going back for quite some time, you know, probably almost two years back with Ron Trab about that, and when it was developed and why it was put in. And we have discussed with our attorneys about possibly removing it, but there's not an exit clause in our, in our, in our, on our piece of property, on our, on our title, that says there's a way for us to exit out. Like, at a certain point in time, they, you know, our, my attorney said that, you know, normally they would give you an exit way, an exit strategy, so that if the road improved or the road changed, then there'd be a way to get out of it. He goes, but there's no, there's nothing in your title that allows you to get out of that, other than if you want to write a big fat check to Steak 'n Shake and maybe they'll put up a barricade there. So when we were talking with, with Planning Commission, or Larry, Larry specifically, and, and Ms. Mitchell, I believe in an initial meeting, we, we suggested, you know, we discussed that again, and they said, well, you could put a curb there as something that could be removed as, as something that if they change that and they, there's a way that the city can help us to get that easement off, then we wouldn't have to go through a whole nother Planning Commission meeting again in order to put a, a curb there to, and to stop that traffic. So the two easements that have affected our property the most are the sign easement, which is something that, you know, if we're here discussing, and you guys are okay, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about that. Is it possible that we put, you know, in front of that sign something that says entrance 200 feet ahead, or whatever, you know, so it doesn't, the traffic doesn't automatically get to the traffic light and think they're pulling in? Because they pull in the front, and if there's any traffic in the front, then they pull around to the back part of my parking lot. And I've had multiple cars pull into my back parking lot. I mean, turnarounds 20 or 30 a day in the back of my parking lot, thinking that it goes through to Steak 'n Shake. And probably once a week, people will just drive right up across the curb, across the lawn, and pull into Steak 'n Shake's parking lot. So, I mean, it's a, it's a regular thing that we're seeing. I mean, you guys are there, you know, you might get there for a period of time and see, you know, you know, a photograph in time, but I'm there all day. I see it all the time. And, you know, so we get that turnaround traffic on a regular basis, we get the block up on a regular basis. And this was, this was my initial issue with adding more traffic from that Taco Bell and having it come and dump right to that same spot, because all it does is worsen that entire traffic light situation. So, I don't know if that addresses what, you know, what your concerns were, but, you know, those are some of our concerns, and that's something that we'd like, you know, if we can get some help from the city to alleviate those problems, we'd love to get that.
Kathy, is that something that the Traffic Working Group can address?
I mean.
I'm not trying to give them more business, but.
I mean, in terms of signage, yes. And, you know, the easements that are on the property, that's not something that we can control.
I know.
So.
You could help them with the signage.
It could, yes, it could be discussed with Traffic Working Group.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
A lot of those easements, when we got this cross access easements, those were condition of site, you know, development plan.
I know.
It was, it was, so, you know, changing one thing, you know, can often have unintended consequences. So again, it was certainly the original intent to pull traffic to that signalized intersection so that persons could make a, a more of a, less hazardous left-hand turn to go westbound on Diamond Center Drive. So, now I'm not saying it's a perfect condition out there if things haven't changed, but again, changing one piece and not taking a holistic approach, when it was originally intended to be holistic, you know, could, could have a lot of unintended consequences. So just so it's clear, even if the lawyers work out something and they say, all right, we, we've signed everything, you know, let's file to extinguish this cross access easement, those property owners would still be violating the approved site development plans, and then the city would have enforcement authority. So now, again, having said that, again, if, if a workable solution is presented, then they would come back, seek, seek appropriate modifications to those plans.
Okay. Makes sense?
It makes sense. I just don't know that when that was all drawn up, that the, the extension of Diamond Center was really taken into consideration. I don't know that that's the best use for that today, you know, adding more traffic to that intersection. They have their own, they have their own egress in and out directly off of Diamond Center, which is very easy to get in and out of. The traffic light allows, actually makes it a little easier to get in and out of. So I, I mean, I don't know, you know, you know, what, what initially 25 years ago, or 20 years ago, what made sense then. I can tell you that standing there today, looking out the windows and, and dealing with that, that every day, it doesn't necessarily make sense. So, I, you know, I, I think it's something that, you know, if we could have, you know, somebody look into, or if there was a way that, you know, you know, where do we go to address it? Who do we talk to? You know, what can we do to, you know, to get that into a topic of conversation somewhere so that it can be properly addressed?
Mr. Zeman, is there any place they can take this?
Again, engineering, I think, would have to take a, a hard look at, at that. Again, we're, we're dealing with stacking issues out there today, as, as the applicant knows, as everyone knows. So, you know, hanging a left-hand turn out of the Steak 'n Shake site, you know, may sound like a good idea in theory, but given some of the stacking issues that there are, and granted, yes, there, there's construction there, so that's exacerbating problems right now. But engineering would have to take a hard look at it and see what.
Some of those cross easements were designed as a result of fire department concerns, were they not?
That's, that's often the case. They want full, you know, they, they certainly like to.
They like to flow through the properties.
Correct. And to the extent they can't, they may be a bit locked in on a particular parcel. In other words, the apparatus, if it arrives, you know, at, at the structure, may have to be put in reverse or something. You know, they, they want the vehicles moving forward typically is my understanding. And so, yeah, so some of those cross access easements are in response to, to, to those proper techniques.
So we can address the signage issues. Kathy will take that to the Traffic Working Group, but I'm not sure that the other address can occur at this time.
It's fine. I mean, that wasn't initially what we were here for, but it, you know, certainly if we can have that conversation, we'd love to have it.
So Mr. Sedoti asked a question, and you responded to the question.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, are we, are we talking about all three of these, or are we doing it in a certain order?
Actually, we're talking about one at a time.
Okay.
Number two is the first one. Number two, conditional use permit to allow a bar, cocktail lounge, or nightclub at that address.
So can I ask the applicant, so really, you've been in operation and you're allowed to, to make and everything. So what you're actually asking, are you asking for a change in hours?
The hours we listed on, on there are what we're asking for. We will be open for the, for the tasting room part of it Wednesday through Saturday from 4 until 12, and that's in the, in the original cover page. Also, we, we may be open for rental, if you will. So if you had a baby shower or something like that, we could be open on a Sunday. I mean, possibly for a Browns game. I don't know. I mean, it would be, you know, I guess our customers would dictate that. Our, our current retail hours are Tuesday through Saturday, and then, you know, and a few hours on Sunday as well. We're only open until 10 o'clock on Thursday, Friday, Saturday currently. The new hours that we're, are proposing would be off-peak hours, so I don't think it will have any impact on, certainly not on the traffic. I mean, you know, from 4 till 10. The only thing that's, that's really over there, you have Nusa, which is now over there, and the pizza place closes, Julio Benazza's, they close at 9 o'clock. So really, there's not any other businesses that would be affected if we had a little bit more traffic, you know, from us at that, at that time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I entertain a motion. This is for number two on the agenda.
I'll make the motion with the five, five conditions.
There's only one condition.
Chairman, that, that, those five conditions are pertaining to item.
Oh, the patio. Okay. I'll change that. I'll make the motion with one condition.
Second.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay. And the next public hearing is conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at that same address.
Correct.
So we've discussed that ad infinitum. So, since it is a public hearing, I'll allow anybody that wants to speak, an opportunity to speak. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this? Okay, we'll close the public portion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the five conditions.
Did you have something else you wanted to say?
Only as far as the structure, and I, and I had a question. There was a couple of things that came up, and I'm not sure if this is part of the first or the second.
Next one.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what is all encompassed in each one. But there was a concern about two things. One was the split face blocking that is on the building. Is that on the first one that we just discussed?
That's the next.
That's the next.
That's coming up next.
That's the next one.
Right now, we're talking about the patio. Okay, so for the patio, for the patio, my only concern, we, on the, the south-facing part of the deck, we proposed a, like a vinyl or a solid fence that we thought would give, you know, kind of a, a nice comforting area. And then what's visible from the front and from the side, we gave a decorative iron railing. I think that, you know, behind, and the reason for that, the white fence that we proposed, was that behind there, there's a big electrical box, and there's also our HVAC unit, our exterior HVAC unit. And so to shield the visibility from that, from the patrons sitting on the patio, I would prefer to have something that is more private blocking to the backside of that, and that's why we proposed two different fences.
This is a site plan, correct?
Yes.
Well, the, the patio has the issue of the fencing.
Okay.
So that was, that's why we proposed doing a vinyl fence there, or, you know, more of a privacy-type fence there, and then a more decorative iron railing on the, the west and the north side.
Any comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I would say that I, I think that while I agree with what you're talking about as far as privacy, because you can't see that from the photos, consistency, though, I think that having the three sides with the decorative fencing, and then if, what were your, would you think about doing something like a evergreen, something that would stand up a little bit taller, that would actually screen that through the year, but also that would give that consistency to that fencing on the three sides?
I mean, you know, certainly some type of landscaping or, you know, or, you know, is, would, you know, you could be concerned. We also have, if you look at the lay of the land, there's also kind of a, a grooved yard area that goes to a drain there. And so I wouldn't be able to plant directly into that grooved area. That would just then catch a bunch of debris going to the, to the big yard drain that's there. So, so again, our thoughts were that big box right there just in front of your arrow, there's a big electric box that's kind of buried by bushes right there, and then also then our exterior HVAC unit is right there. So I was just trying to give separation from that for the patrons sitting on the, on the patio. Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Quick question. Are you putting a deck in, or are you putting a concrete patio? Deck. Oh, it's a deck? Yes. It would be, it would be even with the interior floor, so there'd be no, no height transition. So that storm drain that's there, you just want to put it over that so that? Right over that, and then we would put an access panel if need be, but it's a big wide storm drain. That makes it a little different.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Just as a, a point of reference and maybe an additional requirement, it, it's usually required by us that all that mechanical equipment has to be shielded anyhow with landscaping as a rule. So I'm not quite sure, when the patio goes in, you, we'd want to make sure all that equipment was shielded from view anyhow, from, to the west, to the north, to the south. So as you, as you develop the plan or as you build this out, we'd want that, we'd want that all to be, to be visually isolated in any case.
Okay.
Whether you, whether you even built the patio or not, it should be, it should be hidden behind. And in this case, I think vegetation is the only thing that's practical. So being that, that's the case, I, you know, I think you could be, keep the consistent iron decorative railing system and just make sure that all the, all the equipment on the ground is, is shielded from view.
Sure. It's fine.
Because that would be required in any case.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Anything else?
No.
I entertain a motion.
So are we adding that as a sixth condition to shield the?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's make it a sixth condition.
You know, we don't know what's all going to get disturbed when you build this out, but that should be a condition that all that equipment is shielded from view on three sides with vegetation.
So I'll make that motion with the six conditions, with the addition of the one we just spoke about.
Second.
Now, what are you doing with the fencing?
Keeping it.
Keep the vinyl fence?
No.
No, 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 keeping the condition, number one.
Okay.
That it's consistent.
Keep the iron decorative fence in the condition.
Want to be consistent, right? Okay.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now, we're talking about the site plan. You were two, three, and four on the agenda, so now we're at number four.
Well, it kept us from going down, you know, sitting down. Okay.
It's all about, it's all about timing.
Gotcha. I gotcha.
So any comments you'd like to make relative to number four?
Okay, so on that site plan, it had called out to, to change the ethos that we had proposed to a split face block. And our only concern with that is the fact that when we, when we took the building and we closed in the back garage doors, we searched high and low for a match. We ended up finding the closest match in Michigan on that lower block, and it doesn't match. And so I think putting two things next to each other that are close but don't match looks worse than doing something completely different. And so that was the reason we proposed doing the, the ethos on both the upper and the lower.
Kathy, any comments? Any comments from the Administration regarding that building material?
Well, I guess we were concerned with the, the fact that the, you know, on pretty much on all three, three of the sides, you've got the brick. And then the back with the, with the addition was going to be substantial more amount of, of the, that's what we were concerned about, was maintaining that consistent style on four sides of the building.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I understand the, it becomes problematic sometimes about matching brick, matching stone. But I think here's, the bottom line is that the existing building face that you're adding onto is brick and stone. And the new addition should also be some kind of block or brick or stone. And if it doesn't match exactly, I think you just need to work with your contractor and your adding on to is brick and stone. And the new addition should also be some kind of block, or brick, or stone. And if it doesn't match exactly, I think you just need to work with your contractor and your, your masonry manufacturer to find something that works. It may, I agree with, to some degree, the comment you made, that if it's slightly off, it may be more problematic in your mind. And certainly, you should feel comfortable with the way it looks. But I would still like to see the masonry materials on this addition. So whether you go to something that's slightly different, or try to match as best you can, I'd still want to see masonry on it, because the building is seen from, even though you're facing, it's the back of the building, but it's seen from the, the hotel behind you. You know, it's, it's, it's in a public environment, and right now, the building is all brick and stone, and I would like to see the final building all brick and stone. And I would make that a, I, well, that's kind of what you, did you say brick too?
She, she only said, or, I'm sorry, what was on the report was only...
Only the base. But I'm, I'm actually saying I'd like to see the whole thing brick and stone. And I would make that a requirement.
Anyone else?
I, I actually think that's a good comment as well. You know, if, if the city was at minimum, saying that you should do the lower portion, there, there really is, you know, that's one-third to one-half of that as it is. So, I really don't think that that is asking too much to go that next bit, rather than adding that third material choice. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Varga.
I, I, I still disagree. And it's, maybe it's not, and, and the only reason I say that is because I know that we can't match it. We've been on this path. And, and if you go to the back elevation, and you take a look where we closed in those back garage doors, we searched high and low, and you can see, it stands out like a sore thumb, the difference in color from that split-face block. And I can promise, twenty-year-old brick, you can get, I mean, I don't know how many of you have a lot of experience with, you know, you know, specific building materials, but a color run difference in the same year on a ceramic tile, or on a mar, you know, not a marble, but, or any, a flooring material, or whatever it happens to be, a carpet for that matter. I mean, very, very specific color runs will change something drastically. And the problem is, is that unless you're drawing from that same lot, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. I would much prefer to do something that was complementary and contrasting than to try and match that, because I just don't think it's going to match. And it's not that I don't think. I, I know it's not going to match. If we could match it exactly, I would be all for it. But my problem is, is that I know that we can't.
I guess my concern is just that, and it's the same concern that the city pointed out, is that it's a masonry building now, masonry and stone, or masonry and, and block. And the addition should be masonry and block. So, I, I, I'm not trying to solve your, your problem. I'm just trying to say that's, should be the requirement. If you can't match it exactly, then maybe, you know, I know that the brick is multicolored. I'm an architect. I know that there's a world of brick manufacturers. So you may be able to match to one of those colors, and do the whole thing in a solid color that matches one of them. I'm not trying to solve your problem. I'm just trying to point out that I, my, my issue is that it's a brick and stone. I want to see brick and stone for the addition. That's all.
Would you be opposed to something that was complementary and different? Or do you want to maintain the same, like the same horizontal lines and things like that?
Yeah, same horizontal lines. Try to keep the details the same, and get a masonry that works. And again, I understand, you know, I, I don't know how we, do we, do we approve this with that as a comment, and then have it, have them bring in the samples later for approval?
Well, we've always, we've always relegated the architectural design to some later point. So, building materials, I think we can stall off just a little bit. Can we not? Ms. Mitchell?
You can agree to, you know, have them come back for the architecture only.
There you go.
Okay. Do that, and then just bring in the samples of what you propose.
Okay.
But that it's brick and stone, or brick and block, to match, to, whatever the, whatever the design approaches.
Sure.
Another county heard from. I'll entertain a motion. Does that affect...
Are we adding your condition?
We're adding the condition that it be masonry.
We'll get four conditions.
Four conditions, and that, and that it'll require a, approval of final architectural materials later.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. There you go. You're reasonably all set.
Gotcha. I did have one other, one other question. Our conditional use permit, there was, in our production amounts, it, we, when we went into this, again, we were a four, four-seat tasting area. Now we're looking at potentially being seventy seats. Our production, we're feeling, is going to significantly exceed the thirty-barrel that we had initially thought we were going to be using, and that we were initially approved for. So we would, you know, want to have that considered to be changed to a higher number. I have an estimate of what we think that we would produce there, and, you know, with what, with that seating, and the hours that we're open, what we would be able to potentially sell by the glass and by the growler. So, our conditional use permit said we were able to produce thirty barrels a year, and we're looking at probably somewhere potential, as far as potential, like what I could actually brew there on the system, and then sell. We could produce, let's say, between four and five hundred barrels a year. Now, in, kind of as a, just as a reference point, our brewing system is one fifteenth the size of Willoughby Brewing Company. So the system we're brewing on, we would have to brew fifteen batches to brew, but Willoughby Brewing Company would brew one batch. And Willoughby Brewing Company's a tiny brewery in the, in the world of microbreweries. So we are beyond micro in that. But, so what we're asking for is in our, the, the production number to go up.
Mr. Zeeman.
Yes, that'll require an application to amend that conditional use permit. We need to advertise it a lot for public comment, so the commission can't sort of, just sort of take action on that tonight. Obviously have to come back for the final, final review on the architecture, so I'm, I'm sure we can get you on that agenda.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
This lane is review of transfer conditional use permit at seventy-two sixty-six Commerce Drive. Is that applicant here? So if you'd identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Hi, my name's Alex Dudes. I'm the current owner of A and Performance Training.
I'm Tim Dragman.
Dominic Petroselli.
You're, you're on. You're the spokesman, I guess.
I guess so.
Gave you the papers.
Okay, so, I guess all we're really trying to do, there's an existing gym currently in the building that you see there. The previous owner, he's trying to sell it. We have a spot currently, and we are at a point where we need to expand, you know. There, the parking that we currently have is horrendous. We have people and walkers that are parking in the cul-de-sac, walking to the gym. So this spot would utilize, it would quadruple our current space, and we'd be able to tailor our clients a little better. And we do employ eight people who live in Mennor. I grew up in Mennor my whole life, so I'd like to keep it in Mennor. And all we're trying to do is transfer this permit, so we can move our gym there.
Okay. Any comments from the administration?
I, nothing.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the commission? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions.
Second.
You've read the staff report. You don't have a problem with those conditions, right?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
That was easy. It was worth the wait, right?
Absolutely. Have a good night.
This lane is review of transfer of conditional use permit at seventy-eight fifty, Mennor Avenue. So you're taking over another operation, huh?
Yeah. My name's Anna Love, and I'm just looking to take over where Gymboree was in the mall. Kind of the same type of thing, classes that children can participate with parents, open gyms, so parents can play with their kids. I have Hope Athletic Training that goes to the daycare center that I have now. He would also go to this place and do fitness classes.
So where you are now stays open?
Correct. It's not, this is not a daycare center that I'm trying to open.
I'm just wondering, because we always like to ask that question. We're not trading spaces.
No, no, sir.
Any comments from the administration?
Nothing, other than the condition noted.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Ms. Love, you're operating now, right, in the mall?
Correct.
That facility is open.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval with the two conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Final site plan, architecture review of retail building at eighty-eight oh seven Mennor Avenue and eighty-eight nineteen Mennor Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Tom Flynn. I'm Discount Tire's real estate representative. I'm here with both property owners, Michael O'Schinaro, Ray Negrelli, and Rick Summers. And we're here to ask for approval of the site plan.
Okay. Any comments from the administration? Beyond the staff report?
Beyond the staff report, no.
Okay. You've read the staff report?
Yes.
Are you in concurrence with everything that's in there?
Complete agreement.
That's unusual.
[laughing]
Commission members, any questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
For the administration, just for the record, the proposed final site plan is in conformance with the approved preliminary site plan, if that's correct.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess the only issue that was discussed was parking, which they have made a reduction in the parking, but have basically asked that the, they reduced it by three spaces, and asked that they keep the remaining spaces there. They've provided adequate screening of the parking spaces, and the reduction was in that center island of parking, the, the three that were reduced. So unless there's any concerns from the commission on that, otherwise, everything else, thanks.
I just have a question on the dumpster. Is your truck going to be able to hit that dumpster?
No.
So what do we do?
Prefer, perform truck turn models. It's not close to the dumpster. It's just going to pull in, turn around. It doesn't even have to back up.
Okay.
I think you misunderstood your...
I, I, I think you're going to be able to...
I think you're saying they're going to miss the dumpster.
You're going to pick up the trash, without, without a great deal of maneuverability.
Oh, yeah. No issue with that. It will just pull in, back up to it.
Okay. I just thought it was the wrong location, based on coming in off of Mennor Avenue to try to hit it. But if you say it'll work, it'll work. And that's got spring-loaded doors on it, right? Anything else?
Yes, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
When we looked at this before, I had asked that that piece of electrical switch gear equipment on the ground be shielded from view, from the street, or from the side property. And there's, there's nothing there in this, in this plan that shows that. So my question is, what can we do about that?
We could put landscaping there.
It's, it's high. It's got to be high landscaping.
How high is it?
It's, it's as high as a door. So it's, it's six, seven foot high. Six foot eight, seven foot high. So, we, we just have a general requirement that all that, all equipment, either on the roof or on the ground, be shielded from view. On the, the equipment on the ground is u, usually shielded by landscaping.
You get a condition?
It is going to, it was a condition before. That's why I want to bring it up again.
Well, let's, let's do it again.
So it'll be a condition of approval for this?
We can, we can adjust our landscape plan. We can put, we can put some...
It's, it's seven feet high. That's why I'm saying it's, that's not the typical bush or shrub, you know?
Mr. Varga, did you, did you notice on the, on the plan, particularly the landscape plan, there's actually a proposed fence? It's along, I guess it's along the property line, is it not? Yeah, it's along the property line. So that, I believe, is the screening.
Oh. It goes all the way to the street? Goes into the front?
No, it, it, I, I think it, it goes to the corner of the building. You see that on the line?
Yeah, I'm looking at the...
It's kind of hard to tell exactly where it starts and stops.
Maybe that's, yeah.
But it is shown as, as fencing right there, where that switchgear unit is.
Is the fencing solid?
I'm not familiar with that fence. We can make it whatever, whatever you want it.
Yeah, there's, there's not a, a cross-section of that particular fence. I mean, we can make a, a condition that it be solid.
Okay, yeah, well then, that, I think, but again, that fence now would have to be seven or eight feet tall. Seven, whatever, whatever is required to block the view of this. So if you can make it, say, from the corner of the building to where the property line breaks, to make that section of the fence seven foot tall, and, and so you can't see it, then I, that would meet the, the vision, the vision requirement. Or you could do the landscaping. But I, I think we should decide now what we want to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Does that fence shield the view from Mennor Avenue?
I think, I think it would.
Of that equipment?
Yeah, I think it would.
I might tape this to that front corner.
Yeah.
If we go back to that other drawing, the site plan.
I'm looking at the site plan. I think that would, that would...
The paper in the property...
Right, right, right.
The fence would come to the front corner of the building, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to the...
Come to the front corner of the building, but not extend beyond, if done, to block the front of the building.
And that would, that would block the view.
And then you'd extend it back, I see it now, yeah, proportions, and then you'd go back to where the property line breaks.
It goes all the way to the back of the building.
Right, but I mean, the, I don't know if that whole fence is seven foot tall and opaque. If it's, you know, you can keep the rest of the fence the same, but the section that blocks the equipment view should be higher.
That detail showed, on the cedar fence, showed an eight-foot fence.
Okay.
You can return the fence there, too, so that it does go to the corner of the building. It's not really showing it there, but...
That's why I questioned. Can you see it from Mennor Avenue?
Yeah. We have, we have a sidewalk that goes around the corner of the building, right there.
Maybe put a gate there.
Yeah.
Do that. Okay, well, let, let's make that a condition, an additional condition, that the fence is added, gates added. Well, the fence is there, but you add a gate.
And it's tall enough to block the view.
It's tall enough to block the view. It's acceptable.
Okay. I entertain a motion. Want to share that with us?
Samples, I just wanted to make sure that they submitted them.
Any comments relative to building materials?
No.
Okay. I'm going to put those in the record. Take them with you. I entertain a motion.
A motion to accept with, and I'm trying to look to see, what do we have, conditions?
Three, Joe.
Three? Including mine?
No.
Yours is the fourth.
Fourth, okay. Motion to approve with four conditions?
You know what the fourth is?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wondered if you was going to say it.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. This lane is review to amend the approved development plan at eighty-one fifty-one Norton Parkway.
Good evening. I'm Dave Mitchell, here on behalf of LTC Realty Holdings Eight, which is the property owner here. And we're asking this evening for, to add some additional parking to the north side or rear of the existing Mennor Ridge Nursing Home. We're somewhat a victim of our own success. I'm happy to report that this facility is one-hundred percent full, has a hundred-plus patient waiting list, and as a result of the comforts that we've built into this facility, we have a whole slew of family members who come to visit their loved ones, and spend virtually the entire day in this facility. So they drink coffee from the Starbucks Coffee Cafe. They spend time in the courtyards when it's warm outside. They spend time in the living room, and, and even dining rooms while they're there visiting. And so the number of cars that are parking there throughout the day is substantially higher than we... higher than we anticipated. So we try to push all the employee parking to the rear of the facility. Currently, the only parking is on the inside of the driveway, the building side of the driveway at the rear. So we're looking to add 21 spaces on the outside of the driveway to the rear, along with one parallel parking space for the transportation bus.
Kathy, any comments from the administration?
I do have a question for the applicant. It's actually not relative to the parking, but there's been some confusion with regard to the name of the facility. The plans show it as Heritage Center, which I believe was the original name, and it's, is it going to stay that? And also is that, how does that relate to the name of the memory care that's going to be next door?
Right, so the actual name of the nursing facility is Mentor Ridge Health and Rehabilitation Center. You're correct that the heritage reference is from the original plan. And I'm not sure we formally have a official name yet for the memory care facility, but it will most likely be Mentor Ridge Memory Care as opposed to Mentor Ridge Health and Rehabilitation.
Thank you.
Is that the only question?
No, I'm, I'm happy with the, with the comments that were made and the conditions we've outlined.
Any comments from the commission members for the applicant or for the administration? Mr. Sedoti.
In addition to degrading, are there any other site improvements that are necessary in order to protect the integrity of that slope?
There are not. I'm pleased to report that, and I don't know if you saw the subsequent submittal we made, but we did show an aerial of this site. Since that photograph was taken, we have added an additional 200 evergreen trees along that slope over the past year since the facility's been open. Some of that existing vegetation, there were some very tall oak and maple trees on that slope, have died, and the city has required us to remove them. So we've spent somewhere in the $12,000 to $15,000 range removing those dead trees. And so we've taken it upon ourselves to plant a substantial number of evergreens that although they're not mature at this point, will eventually provide significant screening and...
It's a good, good thing you're 100% rented then, huh?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I noticed that you have some evergreens at the, at the ends of the parking spaces you're adding. Could I ask that those just become one big hedge and that they're high enough to mitigate the car lights on the vehicles so that when they pull in, they don't, they don't wash the houses down below?
This is Alan Wiley, by the way, the civil engineer from GBC. I think the drawings show that the, that hedge is sort of offset, so there's, there's more than one row of planting along there, is that correct?
No, we just have one row planting. It's offset from the parking spaces about three or four feet to provide overhang, and they're going to be four foot tall, a variety of holly bush.
But there's gaps in between, and all I was suggesting is that you just make it a continuous hedge.
Oh, okay.